Don't want to keep everybody waiting longer, we have a packed agenda. So, good morning, this is the meeting of the City Council Rail Committing for May -- City Council Rail Committee for May 25th, 2016. And will the clerk take the role?
Councilmember and Chair Berman.
Here.
Mayor Burke.
Here.
Councilmember DeBois.
Here.
Vice Mayor Scharf. Three present.
Great. And the first item on the agenda is Oral Communications, and I see one speaker card. If folks want to -- oh, no, that's item one, excuse me. Thank you, Roland. If anybody wants to speak to any item on the agenda, please fill out a speaker card and hand it to the clerk. And with no speaker cards for oral communication, we'll close that item on the agenda and move to item number one, which is Presentation to the Rail Committee by the California High Speed Rail Authority on Business Plan and Next Steps. And I'd like to welcome Ben Tripolis to this morning's meeting. Thanks for joining us.
Thanks for being here.
And I don't know if Steph has an intro to the --
Sure. Thank you, Chair. Just by way of introduction, I appreciate Ben's joining us this morning. As council's clearly aware of, we've had ongoing discussion on the topic of high-speed rail. We thought this was opportune time after the transition from the business plan to the notice of preparation on the San Francisco to San Jose segment. And Mr. Tripolis will be presenting a status report on the program for the community and the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members. Thank you for the opportunity to be here with you this morning. I want to begin my comments by emphasizing the fact that we are in the midst, in the San Francisco to San Jose project section, of environmental scoping. And as much as I'm here to present you with an update of where the project is, this is absolutely an opportunity for you all to provide comment and constructive direction for us as the scoping process goes forward and as the project is developed, so we ensure that we're getting your input and your perspective as deeply engaged in the process as possible. I'm joined this morning by Rebecca Coldstrand with our rail delivery partner team of Parsons Brinkerhoff, who's helping lead our environmental team. Rebecca will be able to also capture your comments and ensure that we're incorporating them into our scoping effort, and we'll also pursue the minutes of this meeting and ensure that they are taken as clearly and incorporated in the discussion itself. Just briefly about how we arrived at where we are, we recently retained the firm of HNTB to complete environmental review for both the San Francisco to San Jose and San Jose to Merced project section, which comprise the two primary Bay Area sections of the high-speed rail project connecting to the Central Valley program that is currently under construction. The catalyst for getting us here was really the adoption of the 2016 High-Speed Rail Business Plan. As you may know, the business plan is charged with -- or the authority, rather, is charged with completing a business plan every two years. And what's different about the 2016 plan from its predecessors in 2012 and 2014 is that it's the first fiscally constrained business plan that's been put forth. The previous plans were largely aspirational, directing the overall -- providing overall direction for the plan moving forward. What this plan does is identify and really establish a roadmap for the first revenue service from San Francisco to Bakersfield that will be in operation by 2025. The business plan also puts forward a summary of the progress that we've made over the last two years. It, as I said, lays out this roadmap, a clear indication of how we're going to deliver a revenue service from San Francisco to Bakersfield as the initial operating segment of high-speed rail in California. We're also in the midst of completing environmental review from Bakersfield to the Los Angeles Basin to get us to LA Union Station in Anaheim. We're also making concurrent investments in the Burbank to Anaheim project section that includes a whole host of corridor improvements to ensure that portion of the program is ready for connection, once we're able to move from Bakersfield through the Tehachapi's and the San Gabriel Mountains into the Los Angeles Basin. We've updated our ridership and revenue forecasts, which actually show that the overall cost of the statewide program has been reduced by about $4 billion, and it lays out the next set of milestones for the program going forward. As I mentioned, we've completed, or in the midst of completing, rather, roughly 119 miles of construction in the Central Valley from Merced to Bakersfield. Over $3 billion of investment in construction, and certainly putting a great many California workers and small California businesses, of which there are currently 266 small California businesses that are participating on the development of the California High-Speed Rail Project. As you may know, the authority has a 30 percent small business goal, and the prime contractors that have been engaged in the development of the project have taken that very much to heart and have met or exceeded that goal, both in terms of small business as well as disadvantaged and disabled veteran businesses. The sections you see here are those that are currently under construction. There are four construction packages currently underway, and moving toward completion, our timetable to get these project sections completed is roughly the end of 2018, and I just want to give you a brief indication of what some of that construction is.
Good morning. We're here at the downtown Fresno Viaduct. So, down below approximately 80 feet is the pile. There is concrete there, so now the next pole will come up, and that'll be the column. The contractor right now is getting ready to start setting out the forms for the columns and for the flares. We've continued now with the remaining four columns closer to the Union Pacific right-of-way. We'll finish that up, and once the girders come up, then we'll be able to start doing the structure, the superstructure. So, it is going to be a bridge that will have traffic two ways. Stanislas eventually gets demolished. Once the bridge is built, then they can open up the traffic as well, but it's also going to depend on when we demolish Stanislas. We are here at the Fresno Trench. We've already done the lagging piles. The next operation is to do the seeking pile. You will see a trench here that'll be about 40 feet deep, and we got to go under that canal, and we also got to go under the Union Pacific track, then go under, stay around 180.
The new on-ramp for Southbound 99 here at McKinley's been widened and upgraded. These walls, they're finishing up, and then they'll start on finishing up the barrier and go up on top of the bridge deck. So, we're here in February, and we just poured the footing of this wall. So, this wall now has been completed, with the exception of there's a barrier rail goes up on top. So, Ashland Avenue, we're currently in stage one of reconstructing the southbound off-ramp. We still have a retaining wall to construct on the west side of that stage one work.
We're here at the San Joaquin River Viaduct location. You are looking right now at the alignment and where that orange fence is up ahead. That's actually where we're going over Union Pacific. The contractor currently is working on tying the rebar cages together. Those are the rebar cages for the piles. So, now they've put the formwork and the steel for what will be the slab of our superstructure, where the train will actually be running. Just to the south of where that crane is, is the abutment, and it's the final end of this viaduct here. We still have a piece in the middle here that we have to build, and that's the piece that goes over State Route 145. Everything else is pretty much set, and like you see here, we're just building the superstructure.
So, that gives you a small indication of the kind of construction that's occurring in the Central Valley. And so, when folks ask you whether this high-speed rail thing is actually ever going to happen, it is currently under construction. We are moving toward realizing high-speed rail in California. As I mentioned, there's a strong small business participation in each of the construction packages. You see here some indication of how small business enterprises, disadvantaged businesses, disabled veteran businesses are now participating in the development of the program between the various construction packages. We've also gone through a fairly significant retraining program. In partnership with CSU Bakersfield, we had put together a training program that allowed construction workers of all manner of trades the opportunity to become more familiar with high-speed rail construction and how high-speed rail is built, and complete -- most of the workers that are now working on the program have completed that training program. Just briefly on the San Francisco to San Jose project section, I want to get through this and ensure that you have plenty of time for questions and comments at the end. As you know, we have partnered with our Caltrain Joint Powers Board partners to fully electrify the Caltrain corridor. The authority has committed over $600 million to the electrification effort, which Caltrain very effectively has moved forward, and they're headed toward construction, putting the design builder in place for the actual construction of the electrification project. The follow-on work for high-speed rail is now to determine, first through the environmental review, that how blended service would occur in the corridor. Once Caltrain's commuter trains, electrified commuter trains, begin to operate in the corridor, how do we bring on the up to four high-speed trains per hour per direction into the corridor and ensure that they operate effectively? The stations that are included as part of this analysis include, on an interim basis, the Fourth and King Street station, because we are ultimately going to get to the Transbay Transit Center in San Francisco, once the Transbay Joint Powers Authority and our other partners work to complete the downtown extension from the current Fourth and King to the Transbay Center. The Millbrae SFO station, to ensure we have a strong connection with San Francisco International Airport, and of course, the San Jose-Durdon station. I mentioned the Transbay Transit Center that, as you know, is currently under construction and aiming for a completion date of 2017. So, by the end of 2017, the Transit Center will be done, so we're looking forward to working with San Francisco to move forward with the downtown extension and getting to the Transbay Transit Center as soon as we can. The alignment and the blended service that we're moving forward with now has really been driven, in no small part, by the local communities, the peninsula communities, and then codified through state legislation and multi-agency agreements. We are in a multi-party agreement with all of our Caltrain electrification partners, which include Caltrain, the three counties, San Francisco and San Jose as well. Moving toward sharing the Caltrain tracks primarily, all with the mind toward minimizing the impacts on the surrounding community, reducing the overall project cost, looking at strategies at improving safety, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment, and working toward a system that accommodates a travel time of 30 minutes between San Francisco and San Jose. Again, we are focused on a system that allows high-speed service to operate predominantly within the Caltrain right-of-way. We are looking to make corridor improvements, which include things like tie replacement, curve straightening, platform modifications, identifying the location of passing tracks to allow faster trains to get around the local trains, all intended to ensure that both Caltrain commuter trains and future high-speed trains operate at 110 miles an hour in the corridor. As I mentioned, we're working toward four high-speed trains per hour per direction, accompanied by up to six Caltrain commuter trains per hour per direction. I mentioned some of the modifications we're looking at. You see here, track modifications. We're looking at three sets of passing tracks that I'll talk more specifically about in a moment. And we're also looking at the potential location of one light maintenance facility in the corridor to accommodate the everyday servicing of the trains. You may have heard of the intention of the authority to locate a heavy maintenance facility in the Central Valley. That will be for the heavy-duty overhauling and large effort maintenance of the statewide system. Each project section requires a smaller maintenance facility for daily training, train cleaning, and preparation for the day's service. Excuse me. We're very committed, and I know that the council and the city are very interested in safety in the corridor and grade separations in particular. We share that interest, and one of our initial efforts is really aimed at working with Caltrain to expand their fencing program, to work to completely fence off the Caltrain corridor, and work toward implementing, in the near term, four quadrant gates, which are gate pairs on either side of a crossing, to further limit vehicle access. Obviously, that still creates some challenges for pedestrian and bicycle access, but working to limit that access to as great an extent as possible, as soon as possible. We're working with local communities, and will continue to work with local communities like San Mateo on grade separation projects. As you may know, San Mateo is looking at developing grade separations at 25th, 28th, and 31st avenues. One of the reasons we've identified this location as an effective joint partnership location is twofold. One, 25th Street is on the CPUC's Top 10 list. In fact, I believe it's number seven now of priority crossings that should be looked at for grade separation. It also accommodates a four-track section that can serve as a two-mile passing track section, which would be an effective location for us to consider passing tracks. And we're really looking for regional direction on grade separations. We, as you know, there are 42 grade separations in the Caltrain corridor alone, the San Francisco to San Jose corridor. There are over 60 crossings from San Francisco to Gilroy, where high-speed rail will be running. We arguably have the highest concentration of grade crossings along an active rail corridor of any line in the Bay Area, so we've reached out to the Metropolitan Transportation Commission for their participation and leadership, really, on developing -- on completing a study and developing a program of achieving grade separation over time. As you know, as you are very well aware, the cost of grade separations are significant, depending on how they are completed. The back-of-the-napkin analysis for grade separations in the corridor has it at anywhere between $3 and $5 billion for just the 42 crossings in the San Francisco to San Jose corridor. But we are certainly interested in having the region partner with us to find ways to prioritize those crossings in terms of which we should get to, in what priority order, where, over the course of the entire quarter, there may be opportunities for modification or closure where appropriate, and working with the local community. And importantly, finding funding strategies that can help us address grade separations over time, acknowledging that it's a long lead-time program. As part of the environmental review, we'll be conducting traffic impact analysis for all of the crossings and evaluating what the potential traffic impacts of having high-speed rail in a blended configuration in the corridor. And as I mentioned, we are initiating work with MTC to pursue the completion of a study, and we are very committed to having that be a bottoms-up exercise. That is to say that the local community will be very engaged in that conversation to ensure that that conversation is reflecting the local community's interests and needs, because Palo Alto's needs are not -- Burlingame's needs are not San Jose's needs. So, we want to make sure there that we're responding to the local community to as great an extent as possible. We are, as I mentioned, also looking at station modifications to accommodate near-term high-speed rail at Fourth and King, Millbrae, and San Jose. We are going to be looking at passing track locations in partnering with Caltrain. You may recall that as part of the initial feasibility study on blended service, there were up to five grade separation, or rather, passing track locations, forgive me, identified. And in working with Caltrain, for the purposes of this analysis, we'll be looking at the three that you see here. The San Mateo overtake from Hayward Park to Hillsdale, which includes the grade separations in San Mateo that I mentioned, and the potential two-mile, four-track section, and two of the five initially reviewed passing track locations, which include the short-middle four-track overtake from Hayward Park to San Carlos, and the middle three-track overtake from Hayward Park to California Avenue. Again, these are part of the analysis. There has been no preference or preferred alternative. That's where we're really counting on your input and direction to help us fully vet these particular options and ensure that we land together on an option that works for the system and for the local communities. Excuse me. I talked about a light rail maintenance facility. We're looking at a location in the city of Brisbane. We've been working with the city of Brisbane. There is some development being considered here. We will also be meeting with the landowner and the development -- excuse me, the developer to discuss this further. But as you know, we are very much restricted in the options for a facility like this. We're also looking at a facility in the city of Gilroy as a possibility, but for the purposes of initiating daily service out of San Francisco, we really need to look at the possibility of having a facility like this here in the north. It makes it very difficult to have, for example, only a facility in Gilroy and then try and start trains out of San Francisco every day. So, we'll continue to work with the city of Brisbane on this site. In terms of the environmental scoping process itself, as I mentioned, we have initiated scoping. There is a 30-day comment period, once the notice of intent and notice of preparation have been issued. It is the formal comment process for initiation of environmental review, and we've been holding scoping meetings this week, Monday in San Francisco, last evening in San Mateo, and tonight we'll be in the city of Mountain View. We will also be meeting with the Caltrain Local Policymaker Group on Thursday evening, and that will also serve as a scoping comment opportunity. The local policymakers will have an opportunity to use that venue as a scoping comment event. We're also scheduling another meeting on June 6th in San Jose at the Gardner Community Center, working with the local council office and community organization to create another opportunities, another opportunity for public participation and comment. There are multiple ways to provide comments. Certainly, this morning is an opportunity for you all, as I mentioned at the outset, providing verbal comments. Comments at the public scoping meetings themselves are recorded and entered into the record, and there's also an opportunity to mail comments to our Director of Environmental Services at our headquarters office in -- that will make their way to our headquarters office, but you can send them to the local office here in San Jose. From a scheduling standpoint, we've initiated scoping. We'll be moving toward, through the technical analysis and looking at the footprint of the alignment and the stations, we'll be engaged in an ongoing way in community outreach. And I should mention that we're in the midst of pulling together community working groups. We reached out to local communities, stakeholder groups, the local policymaker group, among others, to get recommendations of community members and stakeholder groups that may want to participate in the community working group process, to get recommendations of folks that may want to volunteer for this process. We're looking to schedule these community working groups, which are intended to be very much the drill-down sessions, the opportunity to get into the meat of the analysis, answer questions, take input, get direction from the local community on how we can improve both the process and ultimately the project. We expect those meetings to occur in late June, early July. We'll be aiming those efforts for the identification of a preliminary preferred alternative for the improvements in the corridor. And I want to stress again that we are largely within the confines of the Caltrain corridor. The improvements that we're looking at input for are those elements that are a component of blended service in the corridor, like passing tracks, like grade separations, like track improvements, curve straightening, any potential impacts to the existing corridor itself. But the physical corridor itself will be within the confines of the existing Caltrain corridor. We will then move to the release of a draft environmental document by winter-spring of 2017, and we are still aiming for having a completed environmental review by December of 2017. Just briefly on station planning, we're working with all of our station cities on the planning of the station areas and expanded station facilities to accommodate high-speed service, and incorporating the broad elements that all show themselves at station locations. All of the connections of the multiple modes, not just transit, but bicycle, pedestrian, vehicle access, parking, all of those elements that come together at, excuse me, a station location to ensure that the modes are connecting effectively, that we create as much of a seamless connection at those stations as possible. Just briefly, some of the footprints we're looking at here at Fourth and King. You see the station house here, and the light blue area that you see around the yard itself is the state -- is the analysis footprint. That's the area that we'll be looking at as part of our environmental review and looking to accommodate at least two platforms and four platform faces for high-speed rail use at the Fourth and King station. In Millbrae, we're working, excuse me, with the city of Millbrae, with Caltrain, with BART, on the station site, on how to bring high-speed service through the station here in an at-grade configuration to minimize impacts as much as possible. But again, modal connections and ensuring that we provide good access at the station is critical, and strong interconnectivity between the other modes of Caltrain and BART that already operate at the station are vitally important. And again, the light blue line you see here is the area of study. At the Durdon Station, we're looking at the station area itself and two alignment options, an elevated option through the Durdon Station, as well as investigating the possibility of an at-grade option, essentially extending blended service from the peninsula corridor into Durdon, into and out of Durdon Station, and ensuring that we have a strong connection with the proposed BART station, which you see in yellow here. And again, that was an aerial configuration, as well as the possibility of an at-grade configuration at Durdon Station. That is my very brief overview. I'd be happy to take any comments you have and answer any questions that I might be able to.
Great. Thank you, Ramon Tripolis. I'm going to quickly turn to public comment before bringing it back to council for questions and comments. The first and so far only public speaker is Roland LeBrun.
Yeah. Thank you. Ben, could you go back to the project description slide just after you had the --
You have three minutes.
Three? Oh, okay. Great. Can you hear me? Yes.
That's for recording purposes, not navigation. Yeah.
So, it does you right there. High-speed rail designs support 30-minute travel, and I think your mayor has been quite explicit on a few occasions that misinformation from the authority is becoming a real problem. So, rather than getting into the discussion, I'm actually going to redo the court's ruling on the matter back in March. What it says there is using a travel speed of 110 miles an hour, the memorandum concluded non-stop travel time would be 32 minutes. Using a speed of 125 miles an hour, travel time could be reduced to 30 minutes. Via revised February 7, 2013 memorandum, authorities consultant concluded that using a travel time of 110 miles an hour, non-stop travel time would be 30 minutes. There is no clear explanation for this change in conclusions, although an email exchange indicated in consult that the consultant should disregard the 125 mile an hour proposal. On February 11, 2013, this 30-minute travel time at 110 was presented to the authority via memorandum. The memorandum indicated that further improvements may be achievable to improve train performance, use of steel technology, more aggressive alignments, and higher maximum speed. Most troubling about this study is the fact that the authority relied on a Fourth and King Caltrain station as a location in San Francisco from which travel time should be calculated. And then it just goes into a discussion about what should the destination be, and it correctly deducted the destination in Transbay. So, right now, the travel time between Durdon and Transbay is 35 minutes. It's not compliant with the BAND Act, which means it does not -- It's not compliant with the BANAC, which means it does not qualify for any Prop. 1A bonds. It also goes on that need to support 12 trains an hour, that he got that from the five-minute headways. And basically, they're not qualified for proper funding as designed, but soon you're going to be, time up?
No, one minute.
Okay, I'm done. Soon you're going to be hearing about proposal that actually involve a tunnel under Alma, and it's going to be a collection of projects up and down the peninsula, including San Jose, San Francisco, cutting down two minutes from the downtown extension alignment, and we are going to do this in 30 minutes. But the author, to be honest with you, if the authority doesn't get in line very soon, we can find somebody else to basically forward this project. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next speaker is Adina Levin.
So, thank you to Palo Alto City Council Rail Committee for hosting this meeting, and High-Speed Rail for coming and presenting to, Adina Levin, Friends of Caltrain, two related topics here. One is with regard to the passing tracks. One of the things that's really important in the selection and design of how passing works is the outcome in terms of the quality of the Caltrain schedule that we will get at the end of the day. So earlier studies suggested that if the passing tracks were not designed well, we could wind up with a bunch stop schedule where Caltrains, you know, you wind up with six trains every three minutes and then a 20-minute wait, and we basically have worse service than we did now. So when those passing tracks are analyzed, showing what the potential, what the outcomes would be in terms of high-speed rail and Caltrain service. One question about that is, will there be an option for Caltrain trains to go 110 miles per hour? If there's enough improvements to make trains go 110 miles per hour, will local users get those speed benefits as well? And in terms of the environmental impact and environmental benefit, you know, some of the benefits are, you know, cars off the road and lack of pollution reduction, and so to the extent that the downtown extension to Transbay is something to consider, considering the ridership consequences of when the system is connected to Transbay and what the environmental outcomes will be of that Transbay connection is something to consider. And Friends of Caltrain will have more comments, but those are some key ones. Thank you.
Thank you, Adina.
And on that note, Mr. Chair, forgive me if I didn't make it clear in my presentation. Both, our expectation is that both high-speed and Caltrain commuter trains would operate at 110 miles an hour.
Thank you. So turn it over to colleagues for questions, comments. Everybody's still digesting the coffee.
First one's free.
Yeah, Tom, go for it.
I want to.
All right, Greg, go for it.
Well, all right. You're the chair, you go for it.
Do you want me to go for it? Okay. So I guess a couple of questions. I never get this opportunity, I wasn't expecting it. Are, what's the rush to do the EIR/IS analysis? I mean, I guess, when do you envision actually starting to construct the tracks? I'd heard that there was a, possibly a four-year delay on the first section in the Central Valley, and maybe that was just rumor and misunderstanding, but it seems like this got sprung on us quite quickly, and, you know, we've requested, and we think that the High-Speed Rail Authority has agreed to a context-sensitive solution process to this, you know, to this planning that isn't a part of this accelerated timeframe, and so why, you know, why is it so important to get this accomplished by the end of 2017?
A couple of things on that score, Mr. Chair, thank you. First and foremost, our, our planning for the effort never waned. The, once Prop. 1A passed in 2008, planning for the quarter, really for blended service, initiated in 2011, 2012. From a planning standpoint, we'd been moving forward on developing blended service and a footprint for blended service and potential for blended service during that time. Out of deference to our Caltrain partners and their efforts on electrification, acknowledging that that environmental effort went first and was going forward as a separate activity, we deferred to that effort, allowed Caltrain to move forward with the completion of their environmental review, the development of their electrified commuter project. And once that was completed, that gave us the green light, if you will, to initiate our follow-on environmental review for blended service, which was always going to be a separate activity. At the same time, as I mentioned, the components of analysis in the quarter, because we are operating within the confines of exist, the existing Caltrain corridor largely, the elements that are being potentially modified to accommodate faster trains and blended service are comparatively minimal in nature. We're not adding tracks other than in those specific passing track locations, which will have an opportunity for analysis. We're not modifying the corridor other than to improve those curves or track components to accommodate faster trains. We're not modifying the stations other than those that can accommodate higher platforms to receive high-speed trains. And we're also continuing to work with Caltrain on the possibility of common-level boarding for their new electric multiple units, which they'll be purchasing. We'll be having that conversation going forward as, as we move through this process. As I mentioned at the outset, the 2016 business plan, in large part, served as a catalyst for moving to Northern California and ensuring that Northern California was part of the initial operating segment. We would have been moving forward with environmental review roughly in the timeframe that we're in, whether the initial operating segment was coming to the Bay Area or not, because the overarching goal on two levels, first and foremost, for, in terms of ensuring that the statewide program was prepared, really shelf-ready, shovel-ready for funding whenever it became available for completion. Our goal was to complete environmental review in both Northern California and Southern California, regardless of its connection to any initial operating section. Secondly, we are working very hard, as has always been the case, to pursue private investment in the development of the statewide program, having environmental review completed so that a third-party investor can engage in the project. Having environmental review completed makes it easier for those third-party investors to engage and make a commitment to completing the statewide program. So this, the schedule itself is really driven by the fact that we want to ensure that we're shovel-ready along the entirety of the Phase 1 program. As to the CSS discussion, it's our, it has been our approach, and in many discussions that we've had with the mayor and the local policymaker group and others, is that we are absolutely committed to community engagement and community involvement and ensuring that we incorporate the community perspective, not just getting comment from the local community or, or having a discussion about some reality that the authorities going forward with unilaterally. We are committed to getting in front of as many stakeholder groups, scheduling as many working groups and workshops and opportunities for community and public input so that we can drill down into the meat of those discrete elements that are part of the program. But one of the reasons that we're doing scoping in San Francisco to San Jose and not in San Jose to Merced is because the project itself, from San Francisco to San Jose, has fundamentally changed. It is not a full build-out project. As led by the community, we have shifted to blended service, and as a result, and I'll sum up, I'm sorry. And as a result, we're focusing on those very discrete efforts. As a result, we think that through our community outreach process that we've laid out, we can get the kind of input necessary to ensure the community's having, playing a meaningful role in the development of those project elements.
Thanks. I have one more quick question and then open it up, because we've got a big agenda, and, you know, I know my colleagues have a lot of questions, but how, if there are four high-speed rail trains running per hour each way, and six Caltrain trains running per hour each way at, at the highest, you know, demand times of the day, which are also the highest demand times for, for commute traffic, how can we not have grade separations at every at-grade crossing, or at least at the ones with, with, you know, higher east-west commute? Without, I mean, if the tracks are, if the gates are coming down, whether they're quad gates or not, or?
Every three minutes.
What's that?
Every three minutes.
Every three minutes? I mean, how is that a tenable situation for a community?
Well, that's exactly what we expect our environmental analysis to help us determine. And where we see the impacts that are potentially untenable, we'll work with the local community to try and address those, and that may go as far as looking, working together to complete a grade separation where appropriate, as we're doing in San Mateo, if that's possible. But again, the Federal Railroad Administration does not require grade separations of operational speeds up to 125 miles an hour. As I said, we'll be operating at 110 miles an hour. But we expect the environmental review to give us a clearer picture of where those impacts are, what those impacts are, and how they should be mitigated.
Good. Charles? Sure. I'll just follow up on that. You know, I really do appreciate you coming today. So it's sort of comments like that that make me feel a little bit, and I think makes the community feel that high-speed rail is not being, I don't know what the word is, but is not, is not really working with the community. I mean, it doesn't take an environmental review to say, if a train's coming every three minutes, we can't cross on the grade separations. I mean, I don't think an environmental review needs to show that. It's obvious. I mean, you know, you could, I could ask anyone on the street that if we run a train every three minutes, will I be able to get my car across the grade separation? So it's clearly an issue. I mean, I think it'd be much better if you came here and said, really pleased to see that VTA is putting on some money for grade separations. We know we need to do those grade separations. We know it's a problem, and we're going to work with you because safety is our number one priority. Instead, what I heard you say, it says here, safety is our number one priority, but, you know, we're only running the trains at 110 miles an hour, not 125, so we don't need to grade separate, so we don't have to pay for it. So it's really your problem. That, that's not the kind of message that you should be sending. It'd be much better if you phrased it much more the other way. So I think that's sort of my first comment on that. I don't know if you have a response to that.
I do, and I'm sorry you heard it that way, Mr. Sharp, but that's completely contrary to what my intent was. I, I think our approach is very much to the latter. We are very committed, and I'll speak for myself, I'm very committed to ensuring that we're working with the local communities. I live in this area, I'm a 23-year resident of San Jose. I grew up on the peninsula, I went to high school in South San Francisco. I have a commitment to ensuring that this system is completed in a way that works for the local communities, because it will be here long after we're gone, and my family is committed to being in this area for a long time, so I have a very personal stake in ensuring that we do it right. So I would submit that our goal is to work with the local communities to make sure that we're addressing those issues. Having said that, we have 42 grade crossings just in the Caltrain corridor alone. The back-of-the-napkin analysis is roughly $3 to $5 billion for completing those grade separations. Not all the peninsula communities are sold on having grade separations in their community or what they might look like. All of them are significantly different and have very discrete challenges to each of them in terms of what the configuration is, what the byproducts of grade separation at those locations. My own personal favorite is downtown San Mateo from First Street to Fifth Street, where you have virtually a crossing every block that has driveways on either side that make it virtually impossible to get up and down in that corridor. So trying to determine what the potential grade separation option there is very complicated, as is really the case all along the corridor. But we're absolutely committed to working with those local communities, which is one of the reasons we're reaching out to MTC so we could take a more comprehensive look. So it's not a piecemeal, what's Burlingame doing versus what San Francisco is doing or what San Jose is doing. Let's try and look at the corridor in, in a way that we can address it comprehensively. And you're absolutely right, I could not agree with you more. The safest, most effective corridor that we could possibly have is a fully fenced, fully grade-separated corridor, not just for the trains, but for the community at large. Absolutely correct.
Okay, well, I really appreciate that response. Couple of other things. I think there's some, there would be some concern, at least on my part, about having an MTC-driven process. You know, the peninsula cities have basically no power on MTC and no real input. It's really, you know, really a San Jose, Oakland, San Francisco controlled body. And in fact, that's sort of what the ABAG/MTC merger fights are a little about in the background, is that at the end of the day, all the power resides with the bigger cities at MTC. So there would be some concern about how that would work on the peninsula, given that, you know, Caltrain is really a peninsula issue, and San Jose, I don't disagree, but there's very little input from this region on MTC, from these cities.
I appreciate that, but MTC has been very engaged in the Caltrain electrification effort, and so I think we can use that engagement to build on this grade separation discussion.
But I think it gets back to Mark's point about context-sensitive solutions and really engaging the communities in what works. And, you know, combined with the VTA tax measure, which is frankly, my understanding, was it 600 million?
Seven.
700 million?
For grade separations.
For grade separations. And that's, grade separations are supposed to be for what, Sunnyvale North?
Supposed to.
Supposed to be Sunnyvale North.
Right.
So I think, I think when we plan, we should be looking at it that, in that context. I did briefly want to touch on the, the passing track.
Yes, sir.
The passing track, the one I'm obviously most concerned about is the one that comes down to California Avenue.
Right.
That would still be within the existing Caltrain right-of-way?
We, it, it'll take some analysis, which we've not yet completed. Our expectation is to try and keep it within the confines of the right-of-way. Obviously, right-of-way has significant impacts, not just cost, but community impacts that we want to avoid. Again, those three options are possible, passing track locations. If, once we get into the meat of the analysis, we determine that the impacts are too significant, then they're, along with input from the community, then they're eliminated. That's the whole point of the process.
I'll give my first input on that. I don't think that works.
Great.
For us, so that's my.
Thank you. Again, as I said at the outset, this is part of, this is an opportunity for that kind of scoping input, so we'll certainly include that in the record.
And then just briefly, I wanted to reiterate some of Adina's concerns in that for our, from our perspective, making Caltrain work effectively is very, very important, and that's with the scheduling, making sure we can run trains. And I actually think it's really important to your business plan as well, is that, you know, when people come from out there, they can get on the Caltrain and make some of those intermediate stops in a timely and effective way. So I think really that everyone's interests are aligned there, but I do think it's really, really important.
We couldn't agree more, and from our perspective, it's not just, it's not about commute versus high-speed rail, it's about the rail capacity in the corridor and increasing capacity and providing greater service in the corridor for the peninsula communities, trying to get people off of 101, giving, providing more efficient commute options to, to local cities. So that's very much our goal.
Do you know how quickly it'll be from, say, Fresno to Diridon?
From Fresno to Diridon, it'll be roughly an hour.
So it's commutable for people who want to work in, in Silicon Valley?
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
So it sounds like you're going to be adding some new stations, and I just wondered if you could talk to, so like Fourth and King, I guess, is there some discussion about Morgan Hill and Madeira and some other stations?
Well, we're currently constructing from Madeira, the Valley Station will be in Merced, so we're completing the section to Merced. So it will be, Merced to Bakersfield will have an operational connection as part of the initial section to be completed by 2025. Our Bay Area stations, the Fourth and King Station really is to function, assuming that we are able to get into revenue service by 2025 and anticipating the possibility of the downtown extension not being completed by 2025. We need someplace to land before we can get to the Transbay Terminal, so.
My question was really, how many total stations will there be, and are some of those, like Fourth and, like the 22nd Street Station, is that a temporary station that would close eventually?
No, we, we expect to continue to have operations at Fourth and King even after we get to the Transbay Transit Center, but the statewide number of stations is at 24, for the entire system, yeah.
So, so are there any stations that would be temporary and then closed?
Not that I'm aware of, no, sir.
Okay. And then could you talk a little bit about, you mentioned the Burbank-Anahime corridor, the kinds of improvements you're doing down there?
One of the most significant is the Rosecrans-Marcoir grade separation. It's a rather large, multi-jurisdictional grade separation that is in the center of the, the right-of-way between Burbank and Anaheim and. the, the right-of-way between Burbank and Anaheim, and so significant is, investment is going into that grade separation. But there are other track modifications, track additions, where in, in some areas in the LA basin, in a blended configuration with MetroLink service. MetroLink isn't electrifying, but will be operating on their tracks in some sections, so there are trackage improvements that are occurring in that project section, roughly $4 billion worth of investment in that quarter.
Right. Yeah, I mean, looking at the business plan, it seemed like there was quite a bit of detail there, quite a bit of investment, and nothing comparable on the peninsula. And why the, why the difference?
I'm not sure I follow.
Well, in terms of $4 billion in major grade separation investments?
Well, I'd be happy to get the council the breakdown of the level of investment between San Francisco and San Jose. We have $20.7 billion to get from San Francisco to Bakersfield. That, those are the funds that we have, actually roughly $23 billion to get between San Francisco and Bakersfield to complete that initial operating segment, but I'd be happy to get you the specific breakdown to compare the investment.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it just, again, in the business plan, there seemed like quite a bit of detail there.
Okay.
A lot less detail.
I'd be happy to get that for you.
And then you also showed us, you know, five changes in the Fresno area in terms of those overpasses and the Fresno trench, and I think you're hearing, again, grade separations are just critical to us, and, you know, I hope, I don't know if it's part of the AR, but the economic impact of kind of splitting the town with these trains every three minutes is significant. So I think it's, you know, it's, it's noise as well as, again, just the disruption in traffic. So you talked about three options for passing tracks, but ultimately, there'll only, will there only be one passing section?
That depends, obviously, the more passing track opportunities you have, the greater operational flexibility you have to marry a commute system, which will continue to have local trains that stop at every station, and adding high speed into the mix. So creating more opportunities for trains to pass each other is better, but again, the analysis, we hope, will show us the operational patterns that Adina alluded to that provide the highest level of service, the most convenient service, that minimizes any impacts to Caltrain commuter service that allows to operate.
So won't you have a couple of scenarios with different passing track configurations?
If I was the betting man, I'd say yes. We'd probably end up with more than the two-mile passing section in San Mateo.
Okay. And just briefly, how is the community working group going to be chosen?
We've sent out requests to the local policymaker group, to local stakeholder groups. We've begun to reach out to councils, and this is certainly an opportunity for you all to make any recommendations to us of community members, stakeholder group members, including chambers or other local groups that may want to have a representative. We're trying to keep the, the level of participation at between 15 and 25 folks, just for the facility of the meeting itself, but we're looking for recommendations from the local communities. We're going to have three working groups in, or a working group in each county, essentially, so San Francisco, San Mateo, Santa Clara County, and the level of participation is wide open. Those stakeholders and community members that have the time, that they're willing to contribute. We expect to have multiple meetings, a, at least one, possibly two workshops over the next six months to have those drill-down sessions, but it's absolutely open, so we'd be happy to entertain any recommendations you might have.
Well, I think to Councilmember Sharp's point, I think if you could be sensitive to making sure there's plenty of representation from the mid-peninsula. And then we sent Palo to send a letter on the business plan, and I don't believe I ever saw a response, would appreciate one. And we brought up several issues. I think one was funding for the electrification, what I just mentioned before, kind of inadequate planning, funding for grade seps, the role of CSS, and also the impact of the freight trains seem to be missing from the business plan.
Okay. I know that a response was being crafted. I'd be happy to work with Mr. Chicago to ensure that you're aware of when you can expect that, and we'll ensure that we get a response to you.
Okay, thanks. Couple of questions on, first, the Central Valley. There are going to be, how many trains, sorry, how many trains per hour?
In the Central Valley, we haven't established the statewide service patterns as, as yet, Mr. Mayor, but my expectation would be largely clockface, at least four per hour.
And are all those crossings grade separated in the?
Yes, sir.
So, and I saw that the Stanislaus Trench is a, actually a trench under a canal.
Yes, sir.
But then on the peninsula, where we're going to have 10 trains per hour per direction, four high-speed rail, six Caltrain, we would not be grade separated. And I don't know the comparison on cross-track vehicular travel at all the valley intersections, but I'd be surprised if there are many of them in the valley that have the level of congestion that we already have here. So this speaks to what some of my colleagues have raised of a pretty fundamental disconnect in our eyes between the plan to put high-speed rail in a blended system on the peninsula and the absence of an actual plan and funding to grade separate. And that was part of our letter that we had to the authority that we really haven't received a response on that directly addresses those concerns. And I know that earlier you had, you had talked about in the context of both the SEQA process and then this community outreach that, well, it's a blended system, we're staying within the corridor, but, but basically, we have two very major aspects. One is the impact on grade crossings, and the other is the potential passing tracks. So let me switch to that passing track issue. When we had, had the review with Caltrain on passing track options a few years ago, the, at the end of that process, my recollection is that the three-track option extending to Calab was not an active consideration at the end. Is that?
We just left it as these were options, so.
Okay, so I want to revisit exactly where that was left off, because I thought at the end of the process, that had been pulled back on, and now we see that as part of your SEQA analysis. And then, under the SEQA analysis, are you going to be using level of service as the basis for determining impacts?
That's the current barometer that.
That's not my question.
Yes.
Are you going to?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And so the, on the horizon is a change to vehicle miles traveled.
That's correct.
So when you say current barometer, that, that sounds.
And that's the only reason I say that, because I acknowledge that there's on the horizon a potential shift, but yes, we are using level of service.
And you're committed to using it throughout that process?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, okay. Then I want to touch on the, the process, because I, basically, in a way, I want to take exception to Councilmember DeBois's request, which is that the, that the, your process of community outreach, which would be a moderately limited process, apparently controlled by High-Speed Rail Authority, is really distinctly different from what we had as a city council-specific request, and which really was, has been a somewhat consensus sentiment of the local policymaker group, advisory group to Caltrain of all the peninsula cities, was for a process either of CSS or a variation of CSS. And that's not what you are moving forward on. Basically, it appears that you've ignored our request or dismissed it, and that, that also means that you are, have moved away from the process that was agreed to for this peninsula when we previously had the Peninsula Rail Program. And the authority's argument has been, well, that was the Peninsula Rail Program, this is the blended system. The commitment to CSS on the peninsula no longer applies, even though that commitment was made to this region back in 2011. We argue otherwise, and, and we think that this is a squandered opportunity to try to do this right, and it's much more likely to result in a backlash, negative reactions, and a poor-designed project as a result of not embracing a correct process. And I think what we want, should be talking about amongst ourselves is, I think we still have an opportunity to push hard for correcting this before it gets too far down the path of a process that all parties are likely to regret. So having said that, I also want to touch base on a couple other technical issues. One on stations, you mentioned the stations that are your designated high-speed rail stops, and Fourth and King, was that, I'm not recalling, was that one of the ones listed in the original business plan as a high-speed rail stop?
No, sir.
So you're going to add that, but you'd still have the same number of stations as originally envisioned? Does that mean one other station's going to get removed?
There's some discussion about the location of one of the Central Valley stations, and again, in terms of a regularly operating stop on the line, Fourth and King would be interim to the extent that our ultimate goal is to get to the Transbay Transit Center. So once Transbay is operational, that's our, our primary San Francisco stop. We may still have an opportunity for service at Fourth and King.
Oh, I thought I heard you say that you were going to keep Fourth and King.
Well, we expect to have some service there, and it's, it won't be our.
The train's either a stop or they don't.
There will be some trains that stop. There will be some trains that will continue to stop at Fourth and King.
Okay, so then it becomes a stop. All right. So then, the other stations on the peninsula, in a blended system, I think there's, this would be one of the things that, that really on a CSS process for the peninsula versus one that is focused on individual subsections geographically of the peninsula, but would look at the issue of if we don't have level boarding, for instance, at all of the stations on the peninsula, can a blended system truly operate as designed? And I think it's a really significant question. In the business plan, it appears that there's no funding and no planning within the high-speed rail plan for the other stations on the peninsula to be modified and necessarily be level boarding. And yet, I also haven't seen any analysis that reconciles how a lack of level boarding can mix with a, a blended system. You can't have basically trains that get held up at a station because somebody in a wheelchair or otherwise has a delay in boarding, and that train suddenly goes and tries to have a very precise merging with higher-speed trains or the high-speed rail train, and, but the timing wasn't predictable because we didn't have level boarding. So is there any intention in the high-speed rail analysis for this corridor to look at whether, what is needed at the other stations that are not specific high-speed rail stops?
As I mentioned, Mr. Mayor, we're continuing to work with our Caltrain partners on the concept of level boarding, not just at our joint stations, but how it impacts the Caltrain system. Have, are, the first step that we took to that, and, and I know that Casey may want to comment on this later, but the first step we took toward that is identifying a vehicle that could potentially accommodate both high and low boarding opportunities, which include internal lifts, accommodating physically challenged passengers, and giving them the opportunity to, say, get on at a higher boarding station and get off at a lower boarding station. So we're incrementally getting to the outcome that you're seeking. We've not resolved the level boarding issue per se, so we're continuing to work with Caltrain. And the analysis of each of those stations and whether or not they can become, or it's in Caltrain's interest or preference to have them become high boarding stations, is a conversation that has yet to be had.
So my question's a little bit different. Is the high-speed rail project analysis for the peninsula and the SEQA process going to be looking at whether level boarding at the non-high-speed rail stations are needed for proper operation of a blended system?
No, sir.
Okay. So I think we want to identify that as a major concern, because I think it's a fundamental flaw, but I don't know it because I haven't seen that data, and nobody's analyzed it. So I can say, I think it's a fundamental flaw. So, let's see, the, the grade separations that you've say that you're helping support in San Mateo, how many dollars, high-speed rail dollars are going to that support?
The final amount has not been determined as yet. The City of San Mateo has requested up to $83 million.
Okay, and so you have your business plan. Does it incorporate?
Yes.
Dollars?
Yes, sir.
How many dollars?
Roughly $500 million for grade separations.
On the peninsula?
In the corridor.
In the corridor. And, and you, you had mentioned you're using a back-of-the-napkin of $3 to $5 billion for 42 grade separations. That also seems like a very underestimated figure. We're not seeing any grade separations coming in at, at a cost that would, would add up to that. So you have a back-of-the-napkin, you, you have your $500 million allocation apparently related to that back-of-the-napkin.
Sorry, did you say $3 to $5 billion?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
When does it become something other in the back of a napkin? Because you've got a business plan that presumably is looking at what level of necessity there is for grade separations for a properly functioning blended system, which we will probably have a perspective that you have been way underestimating the necessity for those grade separations, as opposed to kind of the argument, we'll help with you and work with you if you want to put them in.
Which we've said.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm saying that, that we view that as, as grossly inadequate.
Okay.
And, but then, based on whatever premise you have, you have a certain number of dollars of $500 million based on a back-of-the-napkin calculation that looks in error. So I think we believe that, that the fundamental premise is in error in terms of the necessity of grade separations to have a properly functioning blended system and a properly functioning transportation system still being able to operate on the peninsula across this corridor. But then even if that was the case, that your premise of, of the cost of grade separations and whatever pro-rata share you have is then proportionately off. So you're off on the less consequential thing in our eyes and off on the, on the big level one, but that doesn't add to too many things related to grade separations that we think you're on. It's, it's, this is a big deal. And, and between the passing tracks and the grade separations and other impacts, kind of the, the premise that, well, we're just operating in the corridor, and this feeds in back to the process issue of, therefore, your, your, your belief as peninsula cities that a CSS-like process is really not so needed as it would have been under PRP, we. process is really not so needed as it would have been under PRP, we think that that's really flawed as well. It's just not valid. And, let's see, oh, final issue. Essentially, track security. I am glad to see that, that you're viewing fully secure tracks as being critical, at least, well, I shouldn't say fully secure. We have the fencing along with quad gates. It doesn't prevent or provide other restrictions, but it does provide that. So, you view fencing on one side of the tracks or both sides of the tracks as needed in order to provide that security?
I think our expectation would be both sides of the tracks.
As is ours. And I bring it up because, as you may be aware, we've been working hard to get fencing security in the near term in Palo Alto for, for, because of the problems that we have had. And we agree with you that, but for some reason, to date, Caltrain has argued that fencing on one side of the tracks somehow provides security for the issues that we've had. And I think there's just this basic flaw that they, they had historically been viewing fencing as a way to prevent crossing of the tracks and that they've misapplied that concept to what would be necessary for fencing to prevent someone from getting onto the tracks. And it's, it's, it's a real basic flaw, and hopefully we'll be able to discuss that in the next conversation. Okay, thank you.
Just a quick follow-up.
Sure.
So, there are no plans for any station improvements or, or changes at the Palo Alto Station?
No, sir.
Or the Calabasas Station, right?
No, sir.
Okay, thanks.
And then, I just wanted to point out, we have a discussion on the notice of preparations, our third item, so I hope you guys will stay for that.
So, thank you very much, Mr. Traposus, for, for coming. I think you've kind of heard at a high level some of the concerns that we have. I, I just want to emphasize, you know, kind of something that Mayor Burr was alluding to, which is, my, my understanding of your answer on, on why, why the rush?
Sure.
Is, the rush to end is because you're trying to get third-party investors to participate in the process. If I'm a third-party investor and I see a 50-mile stretch of, of the project with every community or a lot of communities very angry and looking to block it at every step of the way, I'm probably not very interested or I'm much more concerned about the timeline and investing in that project. And so, I'd argue that, you know, really conducting a very thorough contact-sensitive solutions process and getting much more community engagement and buy-in and, and, you know, understanding will benefit you in the long term and, and, you know, will improve the chances of that third-party investment. So, I think, you know, I'd argue or encourage you guys to reconsider, you know, the timeline that you're, you're currently under and, and, you know, try to see that, that bigger picture of, of, you know, how the community can be a partner as opposed to a foe. But thank you very much for your time. We definitely appreciate it. So, with that, we're going to move to Agenda Item Number Two, which is Presentation to the Rail Committee by Caltrain on planned grade crossing improvements. And I just want to do a quick time check.
Let's see, I think Robert, time for your presentation and then what's your sense?
Ten to fifteen minutes.
For the presentation?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, for Items Three and Four, Ed, how long, I mean, we typically have a stop at 10.
Yes.
Can I let's go to 10:30?
I can go to 10:20 or so.
I have to be there by 11:00.
Okay.
And I need to sort of be out of here by 10:15, 10:20, so.
Okay, so we have half an hour and we have three items left. So, my guess is we're not going to get to all three.
I'm just doing the next one.
What's that?
Just one, is that what we're going to do? So, Item Three is time-critical. I'm going to do that next. Oh, they're here, they're here for the presentation.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but let's, let's really understand the time criticality of Three, even though we, we have guests here for the two.
Yeah, so, to the extent that you can truncate the presentation as much as possible, that's great.
And, but can we, can we get a clarification on the time criticality of Item Three and how we would be able to address that? Ed, do you have any thoughts on that?
Sure. Well, in fact, Hillary perhaps can comment on the timeframe for the comment period.
Yeah, Hillary Gittleman, the Planning Director. As Mr. Traposus indicated, the scoping period is going on right now and written responses are due to high-speed rail by June 10th. So, we really, if we're going to get input from the committee, this is our opportunity today.
Well, and I, I just wonder whether we're going to need to have a special meeting focused on that.
You know, approximately, how long do we?
We, you know, to a certain extent, the committee's discussion has laid out a number of issues that we would expect to address in our comment letter on the NLP. So, that said, you know, again, it's the pleasure of the committee and Director Gittleman. If you'd like to supplement comments and perhaps identify any issues that have not been already raised, we could take a shot at a draft of the comment letter and either be a, a special meeting or however the committee would like to finalize the comments that we're going to.
And does the comment letter then need to go to the council?
It has a plan on June 6th.
Yeah, we thought we could put it on the consent agenda for June 6th. The June 6th action agenda is already enormous, but that's really why we were hoping to get the committee's input, so we would have a pretty well-thought-out and comprehensive letter.
And that's why I wanted to understand that because I'm not sure how that's going to happen today, other than, as Ed said, that we've, in some ways, aired some of the comments in, in principle under the last item.
So, to have, so, and we could do a special meeting if we needed to early next week and still get it. I mean, you know, it would, I'm assuming we'd have to distribute it on June 2nd for the June 6th meeting at, at the latest, to, you know, to meet requirements. So, you know, that's an option if we don't, if we, and the longer we talk about it, the less time we're going to talk.
Got a holiday on Monday.
But, oh, is there a holiday on Monday? I don't know holidays on the month. So, I mean.
We could take a look at Wednesday morning again since it's-
That's our local transportation committee, tentatively, which is a related issue, but...
Is, is Tuesday not, Tuesday not an option?
It's really not between, but potentially Wednesday morning following the Transportation Committee, we could briefly meet.
So, let's, so, let's do, let's have this presentation and then at the end of the meeting, you know, let's figure out how exactly we can make sure that we get the discussion we need to on this item.
Very good. So, moving from the perhaps long range to the immediate in terms of our, our Caltrain corridor, Robert Tam, Manager of Technology, Research and Development for Santrans, so give us an update on what's happening. Thanks, Mr. Tam.
Good morning. I'd like to recognize my boss and the Director of Engineering Construction, Larry LaRano, and Casey Fransome from Planner for Caltrain, helping with this presentation.
Great.
So, I'll talk quickly about the grade crossing plans, safety plans for improvements. Just a brief background, we started with the grade crossing hazard analysis for all 42 grade crossings in the Caltrain corridor. The objectives was to identify safety hazards using FRA risk methodology and identify and evaluate safety measures to eliminate or mitigate these, these hazards at other grade crossings. So, the process was to assess the existing condition. We'd work with the City of Palo Alto staff to assess the conditions. We went out on-site on locations to, to look at the conditions at the four grade crossings in Palo Alto. We performed the hazard analysis, evaluate the risks, the different types of scenarios that will pose a, a risk or a hazard, and then we identify risk mitigations or safety measures to mitigate these, these hazards. So, the results were, were good. None of the Caltrain crossings have unacceptable risks, which means there was no immediate actions that Caltrain have to take to make the, the crossing safer. The highest risk of accidents are from pedestrians and motorists following the tracks or just being on the tracks when they're not supposed to, like when the train is approaching. And we found that there are cost-effective mitigation measures to, to reduce the, the risk. So, the recommendation from the analysis is to implement, identify mitigation measures from the analysis. Because of funding constraints, we can't make all the improvements to all 42 crossings at one time. So, we program it so that we prioritize the grade crossings based on average daily traffic counts. So, the, the more cars, pedestrians crossing the tracks, that's the more likelihood that there will be an accident or some risk. So, that's how we prioritize our grade crossings. And we will fund the top 10 grade crossing improvements this year, and I'll talk about, more about rankings later. Another recommendation from the analysis was to increase education and enforcement. To that extent, we are part of the Operation Lifesaver Program. Caltrain has made presentations to local communities, schools. We have over 1,000 individuals attend, 27 events in 2015. To City of Palo Alto, would like more information, could visit the website or call this number, and Caltrain will be happy to make a presentation to educate people how our trains operate and, and, you know, the, the safety things that we should look out for. Second, they, for law enforcement, we're working closely with the Palo Alto Police Department for law enforcement to just make sure everyone doesn't make any illegal moves around our tracks. Okay, so Palo Alto crossings, these are, talk about the four crossings. This is the prioritization from our analysis due to the vehicle counts. Charleston's ranked six. Alma, also known as Palo Alto Avenue, is, is ranked number nine. Churchill and East Meadow ranked 13th and 18th. Yes, yes.
And I recall from your, the, what was it, three or four years ago when we had the grade crossing analysis, is this the same analysis?
This was the analysis done in 2014.
Well, maybe it's less long ago than I'm thinking. But you said they're ranked based upon volume of vehicles?
Yes.
It's not based upon volume of vehicles per lane?
It's, no, not per lane. It's total vehicle count.
So, that was pointed out, I think, to Caltrain at the end of that process as really a pretty fundamental flaw in that methodology for prioritization? So, let's, let's exaggerate it. Say you had a six-lane crossing. You could have the highest vehicle volume and no problems as a result of that. Or you could have a two-lane crossing, one each way, that is extremely constrained. And under your methodology, you wouldn't recognize that the one that is most constrained is in fact the biggest problem. You'd just say it's, that you prioritized it by the number of vehicles that cross.
Yes.
Okay.
This prioritization is local Caltrain, not, not the state-level prioritization?
This is the local Caltrain, yes. Yes, 42. So, here are plan improvements for each crossings. Charleston, and the, the letter, the fonts, red means it's funded by Caltrain. The blue is improvements to be implemented by others, and then later on, you'll see black, which are future improvements that require funding. Like I said, the, the top six are, are funded, the, the others are not funded yet. So, the first one is, is to improve the pavement markings at our grade crossings, putting raised pavement markers along the side of the road and the crosswalk, just to prevent vehicles from turning onto our tracks. So, we have an issue with cars turning too soon. They're supposed to turn on Alma, instead they turn onto our tracks. These speed bumps or pavement markers will, will deter people and, and, you know, make sure that, well, if they do, they, they know that they did something wrong. Having keep clear markings on the zone, just so they, they don't stop on, on top of our tracks. And then for pedestrians, stop here, markings before the pedestrian gates. Improve signage for the motorists and pedestrians to know that there's a track approaching, do not cross here, stop here type of signage. We're replacing our, our track panels with concrete track panels. That's our Caltrain standards now. It provides a smoother transition for motorists and bike-silous to go over our tracks. At Charleston, we're planning to, to work with Charleston Corridor Project to move the stop bar before the, the tracks for eastbound traffic, so at a red light, the cars will stop before our tracks and, and not after tracks at Alma intersection. And like I said, the Charleston Corridor Project is planning to put in the median west of our tracks, which is our recommendation also, okay, to deter vehicles from going around a, a down gate. At Alma, this is the same type of treatment and, and safety measures, pavement markings, improved signage. We are putting in new fencing and rails to channel pedestrians to the, the proper crossing location. We're going to rebuild the median east of the tracks to a standard six-inch height. Right now, this is a four-inch. And we're also to, going to trim trees to improve the line of sight for, for the motorists. So, that's all funded. Now, the Churchill, what is funded is installing median west of the tracks. Caltrain has a separate effort to install medians at all our grade crossings to deter motorists from going around a down gate. So, that's a separate effort. We're doing that and it's funded at Churchill. What's not funded yet and is the other things like the things that we, we've seen at Alma and other crossings to improve signage, markings, fencing, track panel, and, and this location, a train activation sign that says no right turn on Alma when the train is approaching. And lastly, at East Meadow, we are planning to put a median at East Meadow, also west of our tracks. And the, the other recommendations are similar to the other locations, with the pavement markings, the signage, fencing, track panel. And at this location, also putting a pre-signal similar to Charleston where you have the stop bar and at a red light, stop before the train tracks and, and modify the signal plans there. Okay, so, what's the status? We've been working with the staff of City of Palo Alto. We show them our design plan and to discuss the preliminary design. We have scheduled the final design to be completed by this fall and construction to begin in spring of next year. Our next step is incorporating all the design comments we received from the city and local agencies and PUC and closely working with the city on the Charleston project. And we're in the process of securing funds for construction next year. So, we're looking to secure FY '17 funds. And hopefully that-
Hillary, any thoughts from staff? You want to add to the mix?
Thank you very much, sir. We have one speaker card, so Roland LeBrun. Roland, is two minutes good for you?
Two minutes is great. I'm ready. I'm respectful of your time.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, as far as I'm concerned, this is, I mean, absolutely inappropriate. Okay, this is, this is totally deficient. I understand Mr. Traposus is going to have some funding, you know, for quad gates. Right now, the Caltrain quad gates are death traps because both the entry gate and the exit gate come down at the same time. That's not the way it's supposed to work. So, what you're supposed to have is to have detection that stop the exit gate from coming down if there is something on the tracks. It could be a person, a car, whatever, okay? The train should not also get movement authority until the exit gate is down, it's all synchronized. The cost is $1 million per grade crossing, so it'll be $42 million for the entire peninsula. But the automatic stopping the trains requires re-signaling. And my closing command is that right now, the rail authorities partner is Network Rail, who is responsible for infrastructure in, in my country, in the UK. These people are the best people in the world to get the job done. These people are the best people in the world to get the job done. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, I'll open up the colleagues. Pat?
Well, first, thanks that you're moving forward on a project around this, it's really important. How many dollars do you have for your grade separation plan?
For grade separation?
For grade crossing.
I'm sorry, grade, you're, grades, at, grade crossing plan, I'm sorry.
For the City of Palo Alto?
No, the system.
For the system, we're going to be $1 million, we're costing $1 million.
For the whole system?
For the whole system, for this coming year.
For that's, for this year?
For the top 10 grade crossings, the improvements.
You'd spread the $1 million among the 10, is that what you're saying?
Yes, yeah, the rank, one, first to 10.
And are you pursuing other dollars? I mean, compared to the totality of the whole Calmod of a couple billion dollars, this, we've got $1 million for this?
Yeah. Do you want?
Good morning, Larry Alarano, Director of Engineering and Construction. We are actively pursuing to do the rest of the work for all 42 crossings.
Okay, and then, how much of your efforts include signalization?
So the signalization will be unique, depending on each crossing, and the signalization might be, are you talking about like preemption type work?
Well, not merely preemption. It's, I would call it including coordination for more efficient flow.
I can't tell you what percentage of that total is. I know that for specific crossings, there are recommendations, and it depends on the configuration, whether it's an adjacent street that necessitates that, but I don't know the answer to that, we can get back to that.
But do you have any dollars for that?
The dollars that are allocated are not particularly for signalization, it's just for all the improvements and it's in entirety, and I do recognize it's a small amount, but we are actively seeking the funds to make the rest possible.
Yeah, but I want to be clear, when you say they're for all things in their entirety, my understanding was they're not for all things. They're not including signalization optimization. Is that, that's what I'm trying to be, make sure I understand.
Well, there's a, okay, so among the mitigation measures that are recommended for each crossing, they vary from one crossing to another, right? For certain crossings, preemption is recommended. Where it's recommended, we are seeking funds for that effort.
Okay. And then, I, as I stated earlier, I'm really concerned about the methodology which you're using, the ranking for your priorities. I think it's just basically very flawed. And in addition to looking at kind of a second level of rationalizing the priority of looking at vehicles per lane as opposed to vehicles per crossing, there are other design features that affect whether a crossing is more problematic or less. And so there are really three dimensions. The total vehicles, the number of lanes and number of vehicles per lane, and then other design features. And it looks like you're just looking at this one dimensionally.
So let me speak to that. So we, when we did the ranking, we used the FRA methodology, and it's focused on looking at the scenarios and the severity versus probability. When looked at that, and there's a ranking based on that, all of the crossings ranked the same. And they're all number seven within that table, so we had to find another factor to differentiate one from the other. We use that. I agree with you, there are other factors, there's crossing configuration, there are accidents. And we looked into all of that, we will certainly consider your recommendation and to see how we can do an assessment for prioritization.
This recommendation was made to you a couple of years ago, and I had assumed when this was going to come back, it was going to have had a better method of prioritizing. And to see a couple of years later, it's back to what is just on the face of it, a flawed method, that's really disappointing. And I'm going to recommend to our colleagues that we formalize this request. This just has to be done in a more rational way in the prioritizing.
We'll take that into account, thank you.
Okay. Okay.
Any question? I have a question, sure.
For either of you, I guess. So in our last row meeting, we had a presentation on potential improvements to the preemption, the signal timing, and this came from Stefan Heck, and I don't know if our staff could provide that to you guys, but again, are you, are you looking at flow as well as safety as part of this, traffic flow?
No, we're looking strictly on safety.
Okay.
The city should look at flow, I agree with that.
So this guy's a professor at Stanford, he did some analysis, and he thought if the preemption cycle was changed, we could improve the flow fairly reasonably. The other thing is, with these changes, do we meet the requirements for quiet crossings?
I'm not sure about the quiet crossing.
So out of the recommendations that we got from this process, that was not a recommendation coming out of it.
Right, but adding quad gates, I mean, is there other criteria the city would need to meet to apply for a quiet crossing?
There are separate requirements related to that, yes, that the city has to meet. I can't speak to all of the details right now, but yes, there are.
All right, so I guess maybe it's a question for staff, if you could highlight the difference?
We can get back to that question, answer to that question.
Thanks.
Great. You have any questions?
No.
No, so thank you for the presentation and the update.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, and it looks like we've got some movement on the planning of a subsequent meeting front, which we're clearly going to have to do.
Trying to find one.
So that closes Agenda Item Number Two. And let's move on to Agenda Item Number Three, which we're going to have to postpone. Let's figure out when we can find a time.
Hillary, any thoughts on how the next step would be taking on the comment letter for the notice of preparation?
Yeah, thank you. You know, we gave you some bullet points in the staff report of some high-level issues we thought obviously would need to be addressed. I think we got some good input from the committee in the course of your conversation with Mr. Tripolis about the issues that you think are important to highlight in the letter, so we can put a draft together for the committee's review. It's just a question of, you know, whether you're going to be able to convene to review that and give us additions and revisions. You know, I should say also that many of you have many more years of experience and background on this project and the Caltrain monitor station project than your current staff. So we'll do our best to glean from the record where the City of Palo Alto has been on these issues and reflect that in our letter, but you'll also have the benefit of our kind of new, kind of assessment of where the, where the issues lie in this scoping process and what would be beneficial in terms of the city's comment.
Great, and can we find a, is there a way to find a half hour to reconvene and discuss? Or longer?
Is Friday a possibility? Is it too soon?
I don't know.
This week, this Friday. If, let's see, the, a couple of options. In terms of the first, since we talked about that briefly, it looks like the Local Transportation Committee has not yet set a time or date really for that meeting.
That was placeholder I put, okay.
So potentially, again, depending how much time the committee thinks you will want to deliberate on this issue, if it were relatively brief time, I think that morning, even if there were another meeting, we'd need to find a location. This room appears not available, correct?
It's not available on Friday, or on Tuesday, or Wednesday morning.
Can we do, can we do chambers?
The other option to consider, and subject to, again, how this works logistically, is you do have the Committee of the Hall that meets Tuesday evening, so if there were either an early start or a late start, that the committee could convene, I'm not sure logistically if that presents any problems.
That works for me.
I'm not available later that evening, but what time was that meeting starting?
Starts at six.
I could try to be available before then.
We could meet at five.
I can make five work.
Okay. Location?
That's what I'm looking at right now.
That's what I'm looking for.
I can try and get a letter done on Friday and get it out to you by the end of the day.
So we also want to make sure, as you mentioned, that, you know, the council has a certain amount of historic knowledge, but we also have community partners who have probably greater knowledge than the council, and we need to make sure that we're really embracing that.
Yeah, you know, between now and Friday, there's a limited amount of work we're going to do on this, but we can certainly put together a draft, and then hopefully as it comes forward for a public discussion, those partners can participate and...
It's the whole Memorial Day weekend.
And for what it's worth, I would also note that this is the scoping period for an environmental impact review, so all comments, whether it's City of Palo Alto or other comments, will be compiled for the purpose of the analysis, and they're all valid comments that need to be considered as part of the process.
So we'll leave it to staff to find a location, hopefully on Tuesday at 5:00, and just, you know, let folks know.
It can be in here at 5:00 on Tuesday, just the configuration of the tables, and the room out here will make it a little bit different, which is just fine.
That's just fine, we can adapt. Thank you. And I have one public comment real quick from Mr. LeBrun.
So I would like you to consider requesting that the authority consider extending the command period by another 30 days, okay? This is going to be coming from San Jose, it's coming from San Francisco, there's just too much to be done in the amount of time that's left. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Wait, can you, or so...
What you said.
Okay. Sorry, you know we have some process. And any other questions or comments? So I think, so we'll pick this, we'll, I guess, move Agenda Item Number Three to Tuesday, June 5th at 5:00 PM here.
June 31st?
May 31st, sorry, thank you. June 5th isn't even Tuesday. And the Caltrain electrification status and schedule, is that a...
Yes, for item number four, I think really the report is in your packet, it was simply in many ways connected to the discussion we've already had. The electrification is a project that's ongoing, staff has been contacted by Caltrain, working through issues of construction and potential construction impact issues. We simply wanted to bring that to the committee's attention.
Thank you very much, and we have one public speaker on Agenda Item Number Four for Borak.
What time is...
Or is two minutes good for you?
Yes, thank you, Chair Berman. First, there's adequate time from now to the end of the summer, 17 weeks, to do the normal process of bringing the proposal to the committee for its recommendation to the council. And second, I'm not clear whether Caltrain's going to be able to make this schedule, because it's currently in litigation with Atherton over the EIR, and I see no reason why Atherton would be wanting to come to agreement with Caltrain to facilitate the project. So it would be nice to know what the status is. The staff report says that some communities have already in the process of getting agreement, but it would be nice to know, if we have it now, how many and which ones, and what the progress is. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does staff have any update to that?
I don't believe we have that information as far as which agencies have already executed the cooperation agreement. Now that said, the agreement itself will come back to council as a separate item.
Great, thank you. And with that...
I got some questions.
Oh, yeah, please.
So just so I understand the process here, so have we seen any more design that shows the height of the electrification poles along the track?
We have not.
And so are we potentially signing this, executing agreement without seeing the design?
Well, to a large extent, the issues in this agreement are reflecting, as I noted, the issues of easements, construction impacts noise, could there be any impacted trees and the like. The design itself, it's my understanding that Caltrain is proceeding with this design-build contract, which will have those coming later in the process, the specific designs. So to your point, I think there are some unanswered questions, and that we'd want the agreement itself to reflect our ability to review and comment on whatever issues we see down the road.
Yeah, yeah, I think they showed a lower height and a higher height, and I think we definitely would like the ability to be able to comment.
Thanks, Ms. Cool, any? All right, so that closes Agenda Item Number Four. Future meetings and agendas, we can also...
We distributed at places just a placeholder that shows upcoming dates. We've shown a bimonthly schedule for the meetings, so the future meetings would be in August, September, November, and January. Identified a few upcoming items for the committee to anticipate the county sales tax measure, and by this August date, it would have been placed on the ballot, so we would do a staff analysis of what the result would likely bring to Palo Alto. In September, the Dumbarton Transportation Corridor Study would expect to see, according to its current schedule and initial analysis, alternatives. And in November, showing the grade separation circulation study. By that time, the city council would hopefully have received and taken action on selection of a rail program manager. So again, a few upcoming items that would identify some key issues will be bringing back to the rail committee.
So I'd like to add, I can't even speak, I'd like to add something to our agenda, if you guys are interested, which would be the whole quiet gates, quiet zones issue. I'd like us to, I'd actually like, I'd like to actually understand what it would take and actually move that forward to get quiet zones if possible.
Should that be part of the grade separation discussion? It's going to be investments in...
Well, I think it should be, no, I think it should be separate. I think they're separate investments, and I think that we should understand what those investments would be, and I think it might be worth for Palo Alto to actually just pay for those and get those done, and then get those quiet zones. But I have no idea what the costs are, I have no idea what the scope is, and staff could put that together. I know the community would really like the quiet zones, but we've never actually looked at what it would cost, what it would take, and I think as the rail committee, that's sort of our job.
Just to chime in, Planning Director Hillary Gilman, you know, we have a solicitation out right now, I think proposals are due this week, for a rail program manager, and we drew that scope of work broadly enough that that person could, person or firm could help us on the quiet gates as well as the, the quiet zones as well as the grade separation. So we'll have some resources with more knowledge of these issues to assist the committee in a conversation later in the summer.
So let's flag that as, yeah, as an item.
So I'd like to move that we add that to the, to the list of things. Well, I don't know when it would go, but...
Yeah, let's simply add it, and ask things...
Yeah, at the appropriate time.
Yeah.
So there was a request for a member of the community to join this Dumbarton Corridor, which I think they're meeting starting now, and we're not going to discuss it till September.
And is that a, are council members on that?
No, Richard Brand emailed you.
I might have missed it.
Okay. To have a citizen liaison attend, I don't know if we want it. It's obvious it's not on our agenda, but there's kind of timing sensitive.
Can we, can you add that to, to the June 30, or the May 30th, you know, just a quick conversation about that?
Sure.
That work?
Yeah, thank you.
So you're going to add the corridor, the quiet zone?
This is the future meeting, to be determined, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it. All right. And Dumbarton to the May 31st?
Just a liaison committee.
Yeah, just so we can discuss it, and yeah, I don't see a problem with it. All right, okay. Thank you very much. Thank you to everybody who came and presented and answered questions today, and the meeting's adjourned.